We will call the City of Milton Common Council Meeting to order at 7:20. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Ace Hardware, Pigly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. And can y'all hear me? Okay. It's because I'm short. Okay, and we will have, we'll have Larry lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand in face of flag and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Item number four is public comments. And I'm going to go in order as they're listed on the sheet. Mary Ann Warren, did you still want to make a public comment?
Yes.
Can you please come up to the podium and state your first and last name and your address and what you're commenting on? Thank you.
I'm short, too. I'd like to, first of all, thank you for letting us make comments, and thank Teresa for being the city representative on our Board of Directors, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Gathering Place. Oh, my address. I'm 4401 North County Road KK Milton, so I am not a city resident, but I am a city taxpayer, and I have been since 1964. And during that time, my husband and I have been very supportive of the school district, of the library, the splash park, the police, the fire, the emergency. So we've been very active tax-wise in the city. And after all of these years, and with all the others in our age bracket who have supported the City of Milton, I'm asking you to support the Gathering Place. Actually, we're more than a senior center. We offer classes, non-seniors take those classes, people from other cities come. As Dave mentioned earlier, we have the Rock County Nutrition Program. We have funeral receptions, wedding receptions, weddings, hot dogs with Santa, the pumpkin patch, everything that we can think of to raise money. And so we do bring a lot of people to the City of Milton. They not only come to see us, but they do support our businesses also. And I don't need to tell you how other cities support their senior centers, because I'm sure you've heard that time and time again. The perception is that the Allen Family Foundation totally fund us. That is not true. We have received funding from the foundation, but it's not a guarantee. We do write a grant for that every single year. And so the amount that we have been decreased from the gifts of the city, it's really put a strain on us. We need to raise approximately $150,000 yearly to continue to keep the door open and our lights on. And it's difficult because we are primarily a volunteer organization. We work very, very hard to be an active member of the city and to be a magnet for the City of Milton. So I'm asking, as you prepare the budget, to remember that we seniors have really supported the city over many, many years. And we continue, and we hope that we'll be able to support you many more years, but we are seniors. So I'm asking you to honor our request. And we have supported for many years, so I'm asking, please don't forget the Gathering Place when you are working on your budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person I have on our list is Carol. Do you want to say your last name, so I don't want to...
Blomgren.
Blomgren. Thank you.
My name is Carol Blomgren. I live at 602 East Madison Avenue, Milton. I grew up in Milton, left Milton for quite a while, and then moved back. And I wanted to just, I don't want to repeat a lot of what has been said about the Gathering Place. I am here to speak about the Gathering Place. And I thank you all for having us here to be able to speak. I wanted to give a little different slant on it. Many of you will remember in 1982, when the college closed, it eliminated many of the activities and projects for adults here, and that included classes, plays, musical events, games, and so forth. And to fill this void, the community offered very little for adult participation, but they continued to promote and provide financial support for many programs and activities for kids. And then, so that in 1992, when Mary and Allen gave the gift of the Gathering Place, it was a real godsend for the community, since it served not just seniors, but people of all ages, and the entire community. And some of the things that have already been spoken about are the daily meals that are served. And Director Dave Fisher and the staff do a super job of developing and providing a variety of programs to satisfy interests of all people. And to just name a few, there's arts and crafts classes, exercise classes, quilting, knitting groups, writing groups, book club, and many lectures and musical programs, movies, games, just about anything that any, that adults would want to be interested in. There are day trips and to places of interest, and longer trips in and out of, in and out of the country. And one of the major offerings of the Gathering Place is socialization, especially for those who live in the community alone. The facility also has library, a fully equipped exercise room, a pool room. And obviously, operating such a facility is costly in terms of building upkeep, utilities, and other operational expenses. And even Dave and the staff are very innovative in having fundraising events, such as concerts in the park, fish boil dinner theaters, Brat Fest, and many other things, but there's still a financial need. And for as much as a Gathering Place does for the entire community, I feel, as do many others, that the city should certainly consider giving more financial support to this, to the Gathering Place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carl Westland?
My name is Carl Westland. I live at 403 Roger Street in Milton, and I'd like to speak really for both the Gathering Place and the Historical Society. My wife and I do Meals on Wheels occasionally, and I know that the people that stop off do really a wellness check for these elderly people. That's an essential thing for their health and welfare. And so I think that that part of, is one small part of what the Gathering Place provides to the community. But I'd also like to speak for the Historical Society and the number of people that they bring into the community, and their efforts to promote Milton as a place for people to come, and that has a direct effect, I think, on businesses in Milton. I think when you look at their, what the, all three of these organizations have asked for, we're looking at 0.44% of the budget. And I think there has to be money someplace else that you can find to shave a little bit so that these organizations get this money. They're not asking huge amounts of money, but they are asking for some support, and I think that's a really important part of maintaining Milton as a strong community of people who are working and trying to live together and build a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri Williamson?
Teri Williamson, 501 College Street, owner of Goodrich Hall Antiques and Goodrich Antiques and Vintage Uniques. I'm here to support both for two reasons. I think it's a small amount of money for the city to donate to two very important things that are in our city. Both of these things are the reason that we plan to continue living in Milton as residents and taxpayers. And both of them have, I have lots of proof on this, have done nothing but support my particular two businesses. I know I'm not the only small businesses in Milton that can say, "The Milton House Museum and the Gathering Place bring people to our city and to our businesses." I think what they're asking for is a tiny, tiny amount of money for the city to give to them, for them to continue to also help our small businesses in town. That's it.
Thank you. Joan Moore?
I didn't think I'd be back at the podium again. But anyway, I'm Joan Moore, and I taught for 30 years here. And I live in Milton, and I've lived here 60 years, and I've paid taxes for 50. And so I just have to say that the Gathering Place is a wonderful place, and when you get old enough to go there, you'll be very glad that you supported it. So I just try to increase the budget a little bit. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank everybody that's come tonight to our budget presentation, and everybody that has spoken so far. In all the years that I've been doing budgets, I really don't remember this many people coming to speak and to participate. And I hope your experience was a positive one, and you will continue to come back or encourage other people to come to our budget sessions and let them know that we value your opinion, you'll be treated with respect, and you will be listened to. So I just want to thank everybody here tonight. I would also encourage everyone to stay for the school district's presentation that's coming up next. And I also want to invite you to stay for the rest of the council meeting. It's not going to be a terribly long agenda, and we really have a very nice presentation for our team building session that I think you'll also find very valuable. And I promise it won't make you cry. So, School District, you're on.
All right, thank you so much for allowing us to speak to you tonight. I'm Tim Shiger, Superintendent of Schools in Milton here. With me, I do have some special guests. I brought the bosses today. Bob Collin, our school board president, as well as Shelley Kroll-Hinky, Don Rowink, and Bessie Lovekey on the school board, Jeremy Billhorn, our high school principal, and Jerry Schutz is our communications supervisor. And we'll have a short presentation. We'll keep it short. The first part of it, though, we have about a six-minute video that we'd like to show on the TV.
And you see the two purple dots inside there? The School District of Milton is a special place because of the people who work in the district and the community that supports the district. There's a sense of collaboration, a sense of community in every classroom. There's a sense of collaboration and community with the staff and the principals, as well as when they're working in the community and with the community and different events.
What I love most about Milton is the fact that we are able to offer our students a large number of opportunities.
Oh, I love that the community is supportive of me as a teacher and of our students. My kids go to school happy, and they're learning, and they're growing and flourishing.
There's two spots in the school where it's like, there's like a line outside of a space, almost like cars going through, like NASCAR, trying to shoot through the holes.
The corridors are too small in many cases. Students are packed in the hallways.
Right now, the amount of students that we have is applying pressure in all of our buildings. And it's a good challenge to have when we have enrollment increasing. What that does, though, is that takes our usable space and compromises it. So for example, in the elementary schools, we use rooms that were designed as storage as now classrooms.
There's no question we are overcrowded. We have dipped into spaces in the building which are not designed for instruction, unfortunately. That does limit student achievement and student learning because of some of the spaces that we've had to tap into. It's not uncommon to come by the middle school and see small groups working in the hallway, which obviously brings safety and security supervision issues throughout the building as well. When kids are elbow-to-elbow, obviously, just like adults, you know, kids need to move, and they need to have space to feel comfortable in the classroom, and, you know, a lot of students feel like there's somebody on top of them. But currently at the middle school, we do have some acoustical sound issues as well. It's not too uncommon where we have makeshift walls in spaces that unfortunately, they were traditionally one space, they had to become two spaces.
For students to be able to learn, they need to have a sense of safety, a sense of connectedness, a sense of competence to be able to take a risk. And when they're overcrowded, they're focused more on not feeling maybe quite as safe because their personal space has been invaded.
The truth is, we've been overcrowded for a little while. When the last edition was made in 98, 99, we had about 900 students in the high school. We now have over 1,100. In the last two years, I've taken three office spaces or closets, and I've turned them into classrooms. We have no more space left for classrooms. And we are short in science lab space. We have more students taking science than ever before, but we don't have the space for all the courses we'd like to be able to offer. We have students that end up doing labs in the hallway. We are, we are busting at the seams, literally.
You'll also see overcrowding at lunchtime. At the high school, what happens is, you have to have three lunches in order to accommodate the entire student body, but even then, there are kids that are in the hallways, on the floor, eating lunch, because we just don't have the physical space to house the population that we currently have in our buildings.
If you live two blocks from Milton East and, let's say, had a student with a disability, that student wouldn't be able to attend school at Milton East because we do have a basement with no elevator.
The more kids we have in a classroom, the more difficult it is to get one-on-one with kids as well. I would say that's one of the big parts of why we need to have more space and more teaching staff, hopefully, at some point where we can attend to the needs of the kids.
Well, our goal as a school board is always to provide the best educational opportunities and space necessary to achieve academic success.
But I'm one who, if you invest in something, you want to do it right. You know, it always seemed expensive at the time, but when you go back 20, 30 years later, you'll say it was a bargain.
This is the right solution because it addresses needs at every building. The capital referendum, the majority of the physical building will be a new high school, and in addition, at East Elementary School, and then the conversion at the existing high school to become a middle school. However, by doing the physical building, it allows us to move kids around through a reconfiguration that gives us immediate space available for current programming and future growth immediately. And so it's truly a pre-K-12 solution. The solution is, is more affordable than it was a year ago. It's just as comprehensive, and it addresses all building levels.
Education has got to be the basis, and the base and the foundation of every community. And you look at all of us and our public education, and it's something that we all had, and it made us who we are, and it was important. And so to think that we can grow this community in the direction that we want it to go and continue to be this positive place without that strong foundation of education is wrong.
I would say that getting out and voting on November 7th is extremely important. As a teacher, we, I know how important it is, and I know as a parent with kids in the district, I feel it is so important that we support our kids, we support our schools, and we invest in our future, because every dollar we put in, we will get back twofold.
Please vote on November 7!
This video is available on our website, and the, sorry about the sound being a little bit dimmed. I'm not sure what that's all about. And we're going to go through a brief slideshow and talk through what we're doing this coming on, three weeks from tonight. There's a referendum, capital referendum on the ballot. The referendum, one question this time. Last year, we had two. I'm very thankful for the community, the school district, to support our operational referendum, which allowed us to continue our programming. On November 7th, in three weeks, we do have our capital referendum. It's a very similar solution to our referendum from a year ago, at a 20% decrease in cost, as well as the, the solution itself is as comprehensive, and so as Jerry will click through the slides for us here, and we will walk through them. Why do we need the referendum? Increasing enrollment. When, when I first started here in the district, we were growing by 100 students per year. When GM announced it was closing, there was fear that we would lose as many, if not more, students. What happened was our enrollment flattened out. We didn't grow by 100 students a year, but we did not decrease by great lengths either. And so we have continued enrollment growing. As you know, we've gone through the Applied Population Research, which does enrollment projections, and they have predicted that our region, our area, would decline in population. The entire state has a decline to some degree, especially with children. However, what it does not take into account, it primarily looks at birth rates, does not take into account migration. And as you know, as the economy has turned around, we see more and more people moving to this area. A lot of that is because of the economic investments that communities within our school district, including the city, have taken to bring people and attract people to this area. So we have, we've seen continued enrollment growth, as well as our current programming needs. Our spaces are outdated for a lot of those purposes. We are repurposing spaces in all of our buildings that were never designed to be classrooms. And so our current space needs, as well as growing enrollment, are the reasons why we're going for the referendum. The solution, each grade level. What it does is it, it's a reconfiguration. Right now, we are K3, 46, 78, and 912, with some pre-K in our elementarys, actually, right now, just at West, and out in the community sites. This reconfiguration, this solution creates pre-K2 elementary schools. By taking third grade out, that gives us three classrooms at, four at East, three at West, three at Harmony, and one at Consolidated. We would look at putting a pre-K, morning and afternoon, in each of them, to allow for neighborhood pre-Ks. The other additional rooms would be available for existing programming, as well as future The next part of the solution is a, is two, 3, 4, 5 buildings. So last year, we talked about moving third grade up to Northside, having a 3, 4, 5 building. That building currently has 730 students or so. Instead of continuing that trend of that number, it was built for about 600 to 650 students, we would have two buildings that would be intermediate schools. So the existing middle school on, at 20 East Madison, as well as Northside, would become two intermediate schools, with about 450 at Northside and about 300 at the middle school. And again, allows for us to repurpose spaces that were not utilized for, shouldn't be utilized for classroom space, as well as future growth. And you saw in the video, for example, the kids inquire at the middle school, that's a locker room. So they use it for choir. The kids take down the chairs and so on and put it up, tables for French and Spanish. And so that's part of their curriculum, or their, their time they need to spend in curriculum is setting up tables and chairs for each other's classes, as well as their standing and singing next to urinals and toilets in that room. So we have two intermediate schools. The existing high school would become a middle school, 6, 7, 8. So currently, we have 1,130 students there, and this solution would put about 800 students in that building, which gives us, again, appropriate use of space for classroom use, as well as future growth. Our current high school is in good condition. It's outdated for, A, the amount of kids we have, and B, the programming that's required today to educate kids, make them college and career in those four years. An example of our space need, Mr. Billhorn made a very popular decision a couple years ago to eliminate backpacks. And that is not because we are anti-backpack. If you go in the high school, the kids physically cannot be in the hallways together during passing time with backpacks on. It was a hazard. We'd have to stagger, we'd have to have one-way, or one-way hallways. Not ideal when you're trying to get around to classes, to go one way all the way around the building because your backpack is on. So we had to eliminate backpacks as far as in the hallways. So the current high school would be appropriate for an existing middle school, however. And then, a 912 high school on the land adjacent to the current property that we own, right across the street from Schilberg. And so that building would be designed to accor up to 1,400 students, which, again, we would have the ability to expand. As we have close to 1,200 students in there now, we'd be able to expand for future growth. But a lot of it would take place currently for current programming needs, including a new pool. We would fill in the existing pool at the current high school, which would become a middle school, and use that for additional space. So that's the configuration, pre-K. We would continue to have pre-K sites out in the community, as well as one or two sections in each of our elementary schools. Right now, we have a morning section at, at West, and a morning section at West, or an afternoon section at West as well. We are planning on having, at, at East, we added a third grade section. As we continue to grow, we moved pre-K out. That pre-K space was going to go to West. We took two element, or two special education classrooms, combined them into one, and then made a space for pre-K. The summer came along, we added continued kindergarteners, so we did not put pre-K there, we put a kindergarten there. And pre-K went over to Small Wonders. So we have two sections out of our 165 kids in pre-K, we have about 30 in our building and the rest around the community sites. We will still continue that partnership moving forward, though. We do, we do know that people do need the wraparound care. The estimated tax impact. A year ago, $87 million. This year, it's 69.9. How did we get there? We trimmed some space at the proposed high school, some of that in the gymnasium, and some other spaces. We also looked at building materials. If you look, the, the price of brick, for example, is more expensive than cinder block. We're going to use cinder block and other materials that bring the cost down. It's not going to be Huff and Puff and Blower House down. It's going to be quality material. It's just going to be less expensive materials. We also have taken our operational referendum from last year, and we've put it toward, a lot towards our safety and security. If you go to East and West, we have different entrance ways. People have to walk through the office to get in the building. We've also addressed some ADA restrooms at East as well. The estimated tax impact, $1.46 on the mill rate for this proposed plan. Very, very conservative estimates. We're using a 4% interest rate year one and a 5% year two. We're not going to borrow it all at once, as we know the interest rate's closer to 3. And we're also looking at a 2% valuation growth, which is very conservative. We're going to be at 6.5% this year alone. So again, we wanted to give the worst-case scenario, and hopefully, people are happy when their tax bill comes, and it's like, oh, it's not as much as I was anticipating. The other piece to it is that we are not going to borrow it this year at all. We're going to look at borrowing it in '18, which means that there'll be no tax increase, no tax impacting, or a mill rate increase for the school district this year, regardless of passage of this. The tax rate will go down for the school district this year. It won't take effect until your '18, '19 bill. Enrollment. You'll see the last four years of our enrollment. This year, we have 34, 94. Actually, we had two kids right after the, before we were certified. So just under 35. So just under 3,500 students. To put that into context, that's 1,000 more kids than Fort Atkinson. Whitewater is a much bigger city than the city of Milton. A lot of people equate Milton, the school district, with the city of Milton. We have nine municipalities. Our school district has 1,000 more kids than Whitewater. We are twice the size of Edgerton. So Stoughton has 300 less kids than we have. There are 16 schools in the Badger Conference, which include Wanakee, DeForest, Oregon, et cetera. We're the fourth largest out of those 16. So it gives you an idea of how large we are. There are nine municipalities that make up our tax base, and as you know, many of you know, obviously, the city of Milton is one of them, the city of Janesville, town of Janesville, town of Harmony, et cetera, 100, about 100 square miles. Everything north of 14 is a school district, we go up to Koschgonon. We have heard time and time again from some people, well, if you stop open enrollment, you would have more space. We are an open enrollment loser. We have about 80 more kids that go out than come in. So open enrollment is not a concern for us. Again, most of those kids, 85% of those kids, never attended Milton. If you go down in the city of Janesville, a lot of those students live in the Briarcrest area and have gone to daycare in Janesville, never attended Milton's. Majority of those kids never attended Milton. The other thing we hear is, well, if you just get rid of those Janesville kids, well, those Janesville kids are our kids as a school district. 30% of our students come from the city of Janesville. The other piece to it is, our valuation is $1.7 billion. 32.22% of that valuation of our property worth is in the city of Janesville, by far the largest tax base for our school district. And so six of our eight schools are here in the city of Milton, but we expand, we have a lot of, we touch a lot of communities here. The other piece to the solution is that we listened. We had a fact team a couple of years ago come up with a solution, a very similar solution to the same, to a similar team, not a different makeup of people, when I first started here in 2007, '08, the high school design team. We looked at consulting with a lot of people, and this go-round for the last year, we've looked at talking to other members of the community, as well as business leaders, staff, parents, students, our consultants, of course, community members, the media. There was an opposition group that spoke last time we were here. We took their recommendations, incorporated this into the solution, as well as the school board and our local media had made suggestions, and we've taken that into account. And so we believe this is truly a comprehensive solution. And so we're at this point now where we feel that it's, the time is right, it's truly pre-K12. And when I think about the courage it takes to come to referendum, it's not a fun journey. But thinking back even to your recent history as a city, you identified working conditions with your public works department, your police department and staff, and made courageous investments within your city to make the working conditions better for your staff to do their jobs better. What the school board has identified is a similar situation for our students and staff, looking at how do we make it better, working conditions and learning conditions, and that's why the board has put forth this to the community once again, and we believe it's the right solution in the right time. I will turn it over to Bob for a few comments, and then.
My comments will be short, like my stature. I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to be here on behalf of the Milton School District. I'm not going to repeat a lot of what Tim said, he did an excellent job of summarizing it. But I do want to point out that we are not a small district, we're a very good school district, we're very proud of it. We're trying to make it a little bit better, provide some opportunities, some facilities that are long overdue. But one thing Tim didn't mention is we're in an excellent financial position. Dan Nelson, you can appreciate, that was the numbers guy. We are in an excellent financial position, we're almost out of a long-term debt. We have capacity to borrow some money, because this will take some significant money. We're so appreciative of the support that the citizens of the Milton School District showed us last November in the passage of that operating referendum. That was very, very significant, allowed us to do the things that we do. There was 11,000 votes cast last November in a very large presidential election, I think most of it's been one year since then. The $87 million capital referendum failed by less than 300 votes out of 11,000 votes cast in the Milton School District. So in January, after the stakeholders weighed in with their input, and those are the stakeholders right there, and I can guarantee you, we have not satisfied the wishes and wants of every individual stakeholder group. But there's something called compromise, and this is what we came to with the solution. It's a similar solution, as Tim pointed out, 20% less. Folks, we're here, we're here asking a couple of things. Number one, encourage your friends, neighbors, everyone that's eligible to vote three weeks from tonight, or three weeks from today, I should say. All the polls will be open in the nine municipalities. There's nine municipalities, that is the Milton School District. It is the, it's interesting and unique that most of our buildings, as Tim pointed out, five and hopefully soon to be six buildings of the eight, lie within the city of Milton. So while it's our first and foremost objective to provide educational opportunities for our students, and that's what we're all about, is educating our students, providing them great opportunities, it's worth mentioning that there is a significant economic benefit to the city of Milton, given the fact that most of our buildings lie within the city, and then in addition to the city of Milton, there's eight other municipalities that we serve. It's an interesting phenomenon, what has occurred over the past 20, 30, 40 years with the development of North Highway 14, whereas the city of Janesville, coupled with the town of Harmony, makes up over 50% of our district. That is what has occurred with growth, and that's a good thing. Growth is a good thing. This is a good, we're in a good situation, folks. This is a good problem, if you want to call it that. I don't look at it as a problem, I look at it as an opportunity. It's a good situation, we're in, a lot of districts in the state of Wisconsin are shrinking. We're not one of them. So with that, I would open it up to any questions that anyone here, we've got, I want to thank the other board colleagues that are here this evening. I might mention that five out of the seven school board members are citizens of the city of Milton. Any questions from the council that Tim, or myself, or any of the school board colleagues could answer?
I just said one. When you redeveloped your plan to cut back a little bit, you had gone from, I believe, four gyms, back to three gyms. You have three gyms in your current building, so by going back to three gyms, are you reducing it to a point where it's not beneficial, or?
The spaces with the three gyms we have right now are split into two structures, or two parts of the building. We did have to cut about 20,000 square feet to bring the cost down, but the gym will be big enough for our student body to be in there, big enough for indoor graduation, the show choir events, the larger events we would have as a community, as a school district, or as a community to be in there. So we'll make it big enough there. It's technically gonna be a three-station gym, but it'll be big enough to house that number. Right now, we do not have enough, if you have graduation, thankfully, it doesn't rain. But it does, we'll have people in the gymnasium, and then we'll podcast it out to the auditorium. We have explored, if it rains this coming year, we do have, we've talked a little bit with the school district of Edgerton, we might use their gym, and how ironic would that be to graduate out of Edgerton's gym, our Milton kids? Because people don't want to be watching it on podcast. But to your question, we would make it big enough to house our student body and citizens for larger events like that. But it'd be one facility, one room, per se, versus two, which is what we have now.
So three gyms still allow you to facilitate the schedule?
Three stations. A three-station gym, yeah, a three-station gym, we obviously have the outside, when it's starting raining, we have the pool area, that would be another gym space as well. It's, again, you know, compromise is compromise, and so.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. I'm a long-range thinker. So referendum passes, construction is completed, everybody moves to their appropriate school, what's the long-term impact? And that's something that people have asked me, and I don't know the answer. What is the long-term impact on the district in terms of administrative costs, staffing costs, et cetera?
Sure. Obviously, we are always looking at our operations. We do know that we have factored in part of our operational to cover all that. We're also looking at what we're doing with states, the state funding. We are heavily, we have a $36 million budget, 15 of it approximately is local, 21 is state, so about two-thirds funding. And so this year, we received actually a little bit more state funding than we were anticipating. And so as we are looking at our costs, because obviously if you add 320,000 square feet to the footprint, there's gonna be added costs, absolutely. And so what we're doing right now is trying to set ourselves up financially, taking care of a couple of things operationally, our safety and security, et cetera, so that puts us in a position, we don't have to worry about that in the future, and then start putting it towards the operations of new facility, as well as the spaces at East, and et cetera. So it's in our plans, and we're hoping that although we had an operational referendum last year, we may have to do one again, we'll see, a lot of it's based on state funding. But we are, it's on our radar on the front burner to make sure that we are as diligent as possible, and for the last five years, we've lowered it. So we are, we are very, very much on our radar.
Mr. Lean, although we don't have a crystal ball, the operating referendum that was passed last November was the opportunity to exceed our revenue cap by 2.5 million for this past year and the next four years, but it is non-occurring, non-reoccurring. So we don't know. We don't know what, that's a very good question, but the business that we're in is very fluid, and it's from biennial budget to biennial budget with regard, we are a highly aided district, by the way. Two-thirds of our funding is, and has been consistently for some years, funded by the state of Wisconsin.
Speaking of that funding, we receive aid when we have debt. We'll be debt-free next year, we have a $120,000 payment next year, we'll be debt-free, and the state rewards, I shouldn't say rewards, they incentivize. And so we will get back 19.8% of that 69.9 in the form of aid over the next 20 years. And so if we go debt-free, we will lose a couple hundred thousand dollars in aid. And so they do incentivize to keep that, keep up your capital.
I just want to follow up. So the state incentivizes school districts to borrow more money?
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure that I understood that.
Yeah, and they do that because they don't want, they don't want facilities to fall behind, and so what they do is, obviously, communities make decisions, but then they return in the form of aid.
To a certain degree, they do, with cities, too. I mean, the state encourages, as backward as it may seem, the state encourages governments to operate by putting things on the credit card. The state of Wisconsin wants us to do that.
Speaking of the credit card, I just want to interject that prior to the passage of that operating referendum, you may have heard a statistic, which is very true, that we were the lowest spending district in the state of Wisconsin. We are no longer hold that ranking because of the, because of that operating referendum that was passed. We lost the ranking of number one in the state being the lowest spending district in the state. But I want to go back to where it, an excellent financial position to take on capital debt. That would take 20 years, 26 years, whatever. The details is to be determined. I would point out that with the passage of the Harmony School referendum a number of years ago, that was paid back at a much faster level than what was originally targeted.
Right, it's a 20, it was a 20-year loan, we're paying it off next year in '15. So what would we finance? We were very conscious of the taxpayers, absolutely. We also have factored into this 69.9 improvements to infrastructure, roads, et cetera, high street, et cetera. We've met with Al and Howie to talk about the impact there, and any improvements would be included in there, which means that we would look to not have city residents pay twice.
Tim, what happens if we exceed, if something comes out, would we ever exceed 69.9 million?
Legally, we cannot. So what we'll do is, we will figure it out, because that's what we do. You know, when health insurance goes up, we figure it out. We find creative ways to do things. And so 69.9 is the not-to-exceed amount.
So I have a question, and you might have been here when we were talking about this. So at the, right now, for the city of Milton, for every dollar that we collect in taxes, 26 cents goes to debt service. So what does that look like if your referendum passes? Like how much, how much, I guess, of the debt service, how much of a percentage of your budget will that be? Or can you answer it in terms of every tax dollar collected, or?
Well, remember, right now, next year, we'll have zero going into debt service, and so there'll be a separate, there's the, this borrowing is a separate from our, from our $36 million. So it would be, there'll be dedicated dollars to that. And so then that payback, the $146 on a $100,000 home, again, that's estimated on the high end, would directly go to there, and then we would have, the other part of the levy would go to our operation, our 15 million, which decreases.
I want to clarify something. Milton Courier last week reporting on the borrowing, short-term borrowing, that we've done every year for as long as I've been on the school board, and then sometime before that. We have a relatively modest, we have a, we have a good fund balance, but it's not an excessive fund. What I'm getting at is, we do short-term borrow, but the debt that I'm speaking of earlier that we're almost out of is the long-term capital debt. I just want to clarify that, in case anybody here was thinking, oh geez, I just read in the Courier where they borrowed some money last week, or going to. And we do that every year for cash flow purposes.
So to answer your question, it's a separate fund. It's strictly that borrow, we'll be debt-free, so we'll have zero on that side, but then if this passes, we'll have that payment, that'll be kind of separate from, it's a separate, completely separate fund. And so, you know, if we're collecting that, you know, I don't know what percentage, I guess you'd probably look at, I'd have to look into it and get it back to you. I don't, I have to look at how that formula works out, but in essence, that 69.9 would go strictly to the capital stuff, which is separate from the other borrowing. And that's why when you see, because we can borrow that over 20-plus years, the tax impact is less than an operational referendum where that tax impact's greater, because that's coming from the levy every year, and so it'll be a much smaller impact to the taxpayers.
Okay, so that's great for my follow-up question. Because you're borrowing it over time, and there is cost savings, and I don't know if you're doing interest payments first, or I don't know really what that looks like, but what happens to your ability if like a $5 or $10 million issue comes up? I don't know what it is, or what it could be, and certainly you don't, but are you positioning the school district in a way that there, maybe they would be able to borrow, but it just would not even be affordable? So I'm just wondering, how, how much are you tying your hands with doing it for 26 years?
Right. We're looking at, kind of like the car payment scenario, if you borrow for, you know, if you look at a car loan for four years versus five versus six, we were looking at, what's the impact to taxpayers? Knowing that we're gonna refinance over time, we're looking at borrowing a smaller amount in the first year, and stepping, it could be like a three years where we borrow the entire amount then. We have a borrowing capacity of 160 million. We're looking to borrow 69. So we have the ability to continue to borrow, should we need to. We haven't needed that in the past, we've taken care of it through our, through our operational budget, and each year, as we are paying stuff down, we are lowering the levy. We'll be lowering it again this year. And so we'll be well-positioned, but knowing that we are not ones to come to the community often for this kind of stuff, we would not want to do that, we would plan accordingly. If we had a disaster, obviously, it might be insurance or something like that would cover some of that, but if we had, you know, something else came up, you know what, I know what they would tell me is, figure it out. Okay, we'll figure it out, because we don't want to be back here again and again and again. And that's why this solution at 69.9 is better than, you know, trying to piece things together, you know, for 40, or 20, or 30, we're always coming back every two years, and we're not really solving the need at once.
So can you assure us that for the next 26 years, we're covered in building and major expenses on? I mean, like you've looked out that far ahead as far as capital needs or building needs, like we're covered, we're good?
For 26 years? No.
Okay, all right.
And of course, as we are growing, part of that is, you know, we're taking care of our needs now and for the city of a future. With Red Hawk Farms, with Advantage Homes, I mean, if we're adding 100-plus homes just in that area alone, where, you know, what is the average house for sale right now is 11 days in the school district? People are coming here. And so it's, we're hoping, that's why this solution, because it touches pre-K12, we feel we have space. You're talking about adding, you know, 100-plus elementary kids, that's a lot of kids. You know, we have room for growth for another 100 or so at the high school, we have room for growth at another 100 or 200 at the middle, so that's a lot of kids to bring in the community. But we can't predict migration, and that's where the population boom, we have, not boom, but we have seen the increase over and over. But we can't predict migration, and that's where the, the population boom, we have, not boom, but we have seen the increase over and over and over again.
I just want to tell you that when you asked that question about the Oregon School District, they, they passed a $58 million referendum, which they just are finishing up the construction now. Now, when you ask that question to them, they've just formed a study committee in Oregon, and they're about our size school district, that in the next 10 years, they're projected to double, because the community has embraced the changes, and they've seen the changes that have happened in that school district. And now they've got people coming out of their ears wanting to be in that school district. And so, yes, they're going to have to go back again, they're looking at it. But think of that, 50% growth in 10 years, they're projected to be. And so I believe if we pass this school, that we're going to see some growth here too. Because people are looking, are waiting to see what happens. I've got former students who moved back in the area from other communities, and they're not, they're living with their parents. They're waiting to see what happens with our school district. Otherwise, if we don't build, they're going to move, because they're looking at going in the school that they know, district that will grow.
I want to go back to what Mr. Shiger said earlier too, Mayor Welch, with regards to the assumption built into the $1.46 impact of the mill rate on this borrowing, and that is a very, very, very conservative projected 2% growth for the next 20 years. If I'm a gambler, I'm going to take the fact, I'm going to gamble that we're going to grow as a district greater than 2%. I don't know that, but I'm going to assume that we will. We are going, but for this purposes of this, and discussion and to be conservative, because that's what a banker likes to do, is be conservative, 2% projected annual growth for 20 years, and the, and the interest rate of 4%, which currently is lower than that. Don't borrow all the money before you need it, and those kinds of things, through the advice of Baird Financial, who is a new partner in our proposal, we think is a great opportunity. We have one of the lowest mill rates in southern Wisconsin as a school district.
Other questions?
Yes, I have some questions. You were talking about traffic studies. Are you planning on doing a traffic study on Madison Avenue? When, since you're talking about having your sixth to eighth, sixth to eighth graders in the current high school? No, the old middle school, and then the north side?
So the north side right now has 730 students. We would take that, that population split between the middle school and north side. And so you can have less traffic on north side, which people I'm sure will be happy with, the people on Madison Avenue. We've done the traffic study with the high school area, the Schilberg High Street and John Paul, that area. And we feel, because that's where, that's where physical, financial improvements would need to be. We would be able to look at a traffic study globally. For the purposes of this, we're looking at the financial impact, but we will be looking at that and keeping that as well under, we have the next couple of years to be working on that. But with those areas, there's, with not only staff, but students driving and so on up our campus, it's, it made more sense to do it up there at this point. And hopefully, by having the kids spread out, we won't have as much traffic, at the same time, all converging like we've had in the past. But it's something we, we have the next couple of years to be looking at. We spent the money on what the financial impact is going to be, and then we have time to continue that service.
I'll, I'll just make a, a comment on that too. I would think, and I'm not a traffic engineer, that the traffic on Madison Avenue will probably get better. And, and I would advocate for, and I don't make this decision, I would advocate for that if, if the referendum passes, that we as a city should look to conduct some sort of traffic impact analysis on Madison Avenue, to see if there's traffic control devices that are currently in place that should be changed. Because I think at that point, once the referendum's set, and, and has passed, and, and we know that there's a large shift of traffic to a new segment of the community, the school district has, has conducted a traffic impact analysis on that area. So the rest of it, I, I think it's really the city's responsibility to see where, okay, what's the new pattern? How does that work, similar to what we did when the bypass came? I, I, that, that would be my recommendation, I know that's a couple steps down the road. I agree with Tim, we've got two or three years to figure that out if that's the case. But I would think it would be in our best interest to do that irrespective of, of whether they would want to do that. And, because I, I think it's going to increase, and then we could look at different things that we might want to do on Madison Avenue and those surrounding streets, up to and including pavement improvements, or maybe lane shrinking.
I just checked my clock, and I don't know, the Cubs could be in the world the fourth inning by now. So is there any other questions, concerns, comments, observations relative to the similar solution that we gave to the, the voters of the nine municipalities, which is the Milton School District, last fall? And, and it is three weeks from today.
Are you going to the other districts, other board meetings?
We, we've been doing a number of presentations, but this is the only presentation to a municipality. We think this is a huge one, not that the others are less important, but as I mentioned before, because once this, once this referendum passes, and we have a new high school up there on High Street, we have six of the eight buildings then, at that point, within the city confines. So, and having been a resident on Hilltop, living across from that high school for the past 28 years, independent of a traffic study, I can tell you it's a 24/7 building. 24/7, weekends are no exceptions. Schilberg Park is no exception, the place never sleeps. It's a huge economic driver to the city of Milton, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. One last parting comment, and that would be this. I ask, I ask a couple of things, and Mr. Westrick does this all the time. He couldn't be here this evening. Number one, we ask that just everyone be as best informed as possible. You've got three remaining weeks, and if you haven't heard about our referendum, seek information. And number two, just get out and vote. All night, all the usual, it's a special referendum, the school district of Milton is paying for it. The, the thank you to the taxpayers to allow us to do it, it's a special referendum on the traditional tack, traditional voting day. But there is no other ballot, there is nothing else on the ballot other than this very important question. It's an exciting time, I'm going to part with this. We could use your support. We could use your endorsement. We have the unanimous endorsement of Forward Jan Zoll. We have the unanimous endorsement of the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce. I realize it's not on your agenda this evening, Mayor Welch, but I, on behalf of the school board, am asking the city of Milton for your endorsement prior to the, the three weeks from now. So whatever you can do to that end, and whatever consideration you can give us, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
One, one comment I'll make, oh, Tim, there I got.
Real quick.
Bob had like four wrap-up comments.
He did, and real quick, again, thank you on behalf of the school district. Real quick, we are paying for the, the cost of the referendum, and the reason why it's going to cost is about $20,000 for the volunteers to help us out, right? But it costs 20, sorry, it costs $40,000 a month in building costs and interest costs, and that's why the district has decided to go now and not wait until April. On behalf of the school district, thank you so much for this opportunity. I know we went way long, and I apologize for that, but thank you so much. We felt it was important to be here.
You know, along some of the comments that, that, that Mr. Cullen and Mr. Verwink made, you know, I, looking at it from the city's perspective, and, and some of those comments were very, very well put. You know, the city of Milton actually only constitutes 19% of the value of the school district. You know, it's a very large school district. But I do agree that the city of Milton gets the vast majority of the benefit from the school district, from an economic standpoint. And I will say, over and over and over again, almost, almost bat in a thousand, what I hear from industrial developers, employers, residential developers, and commercial developers, one, one of the first things, if it's not the first thing, it's generally in the top three, is they want to be here because of the school district. So I say that not to, in, in, you know, Mr. Cullen asked for an endorsement, you know, I'm not in the endorsing world, that's, that's you guys' job. But I say that because I think it's important to note the, the econ, the true economic impact of the school district. And irrespective of, of, of the nuts and bolts of this referendum, or, you know, anything else that may or may not have happened over the years past, the school district is, in, in many ways, the number-one economic driver for the city of Milton, and it's certainly the number-one employer. So that is, that, that should be taken into consideration, whatever we're talking about, the school district. Irrespective of referendums, irrespective of, of who, who may be there or not, you know, today or tomorrow, it is the number-one economic driver for the city, it's, it's just, it's unequivocal. There was a letter to the editor this weekend from, from a, a business owner who's opening up a business in Milton, and, you know, very, very much engaged, right out of the gates, and, and, you know, talked about the importance of the school district. And we've heard that from other business owners as well. So again, irrespective of the nuts and bolts of, of this referendum, and the language that it may be, and what things may look like, you know, 10, 15, 20 years out, the school district is incredibly important to our vitality as a community. And as we see growth, like we talked about at 6 o'clock, $27 million worth of growth in our community, and that growth continues to be diversified. For a long time, Milton was heavily reliant on residential development, and over time, that scale tips backwards. There's a tipping point in which residential development actually costs more than it makes the city. So we've had to diversify our tax base, and we have seen that through job creations and industrial, our industrial park. And right, wrong, or indifferent, everybody says, "school district." So it's, it is incredibly important to the overall economic picture, the makeup, how the value is derived in our community. And as, as we see growth continue to happen, the, the, the burden on the district is only going to continue to increase. So, so again, I'm trying to say those comments from, from as objectively as I can, based on empirical data. Our community continues to grow, our tax base continues to diversify, and what everybody continues to point to is the most important factor for their decision to locate, grow, or move here is the school district.
And then I would also just like to add too, during my tenure as a city councilwoman, there's been, I know that 20, 20 years ago, there was a lot of probably hard feelings, and there was not as much cooperation as there is today between the school district and the city. And I, I just feel like we have come so far in becoming better community partners, and I think that that's important. I think it's important for the residents that come into the city, to the residents that come into the school district from other cities. I, I, I feel that it is very important that they see all of us coming together. A perfect example of that is our Milton Public Library. If you look at all of the stuff that we have going on in the library, that was not 100% of the city. It's also the school district. And it wouldn't be what it is right now as far as the, some of the more updated things without the school district. So with that said, I will, I will, as president of the council, ask the question, does the council want to endorse the school board and this referendum?
We can put that on the next agenda.
We will not have time to do that, because we will not have a meeting prior to the referendum. I think we will need to do that tonight.
Mark, can we do that tonight?
No, you can discuss the referendum, but you don't have any specific action item on voting whether or not to endorse the referendum. And I think that, I would recommend that, for, especially if we have very important public questions like this. The law is quite clear that you need to be specific, so that these, public has a, is duly noticed, notified of what's going to be discussed. So they can be here if they want.
So we would have to schedule a special meeting to make the...
I think that's what he's saying. I, I, unless there's another, if you want to, I'll write a letter to the editor and sign it. I, I don't know if that's another avenue that y'all could take.
That's great, you just can't act as a body without having it properly noticed, that's all.
So they couldn't sign a letter then, is that acting as a body?
Not, they can't sign a joint letter, no.
They could all write individual letters.
You know, they can express themselves individually, yes.
Well, we can decide if we want to schedule a special meeting, can we do that?
Sure, we can do that at the next, at the end of this meeting, general items?
Yes.
That's right, that's right, we're doing it after team building. Whatever the council wants to do. Can we do it right now, or do we have to wait?
That's fine, you can do it now. So we can't do it tomorrow night? Do we, it would be the only item on the agenda, so we, we can do it anytime.
Is it usually a half hour for their meeting, or hour?
Um, I, I'm planning an hour, and we're at Hilltop.
How about five? We will post notice on an agenda.
City Council meeting 5:00 PM here.
All right, we'll, we'll get, we'll get an agenda, it's going to be pretty brief. The discussion and possible action on the, on the endorsement of the, of the school district referendum. And I, I, well, I'll just say, I didn't see, I didn't know that this was going to happen. But I, but I want council members to, to feel comfortable with understanding that I, I don't think anybody's made up their mind yet on, on, okay, all right, I just.
But we can spend the time discussing it, and...
And half an hour will be enough time?
Yes.
Yes.
And, you know, the thing is too, I, I just want the, any residences that might be watching over the internet and tomorrow or the day after, that we are also taxpayers here too. So we understand that concern of that year-end, that dollar amount that's going to come out on our taxes. So we understand that also, but like I said, and I'll reiterate it again, I feel like being a community partner is very, very important. I think it's, it's positive in every way that it can be.
Anything else, or anything? Thank you so much for coming, thank you for all the time and effort, and we appreciate you're taking our questions. They weren't meant to be overly difficult, but to be informative for the public. The only other comment I would make is that 300 people were removed from our voter registration this year in the city of Milton. That's just in the city of Milton, I don't know throughout the whole district how many people were removed. But I guess I would suggest people check to make sure that they're registered to vote, because the state purged their voter rolls. Consent agenda, ready?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I just, I'm sorry, in an, in an atypical fashion, for the consent agenda, I just want to make sure that folks know that that item passed at the, at the Plan Commission level, and they put two contingencies on the conditional use permit. One, that the, the light and the, the sign and the steeple light needed to be off by nine, and also that there would be no animation on the sign. So I just want to make sure people are aware of that as they make that vote, as they make their vote.
Thank you for bringing that out, Al, because that was actually something that I was a little bit bothered by when I attended that meeting. Why are we telling somebody in a church to shut off their, their...
Are you going to move that off of the consent agenda then?
So we're going to bring that down. Is there anything else you want to bring down? Okay, so is there anything else you want to bring down? No, you're good. Anything else you want to bring off the consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? There's a motion in a second, all those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. The next item is a discussion, possible action to approve the site plan for what church?
St. John's Evangelical Lutheran Church located at 910 East, East High Street.
Okay. Conditional use.
So at the Plan Commission level, the, the Plan Commission put stipulations on the electronic message center that the, that the church is requesting that the sign needed to be turned off at 9 o'clock. That came, well, first, in terms of electronic message centers, the, basically the city does set the regulation for when those signs need to be off, because in ordinance, it's... Uh, because in ordinance it says, "At time of close of business." Well, um, God's always on duty, so the church never closes. Um, so, so in, in past, and we did the same thing with the high school, too, just a couple of years ago. Uh, so, so they put those conditions on there, and I just wanted folks to be aware that those conditions were on there. And those came at, at the request of, of neighbors. Two, two or three neighbors spoke.
Could you, could you talk about that other light that they were referring to, though?
So you're a member of the church? That's the thing, your hesitation?
Yes, I'm a member of the church. I'm also on the, on the church council. So I'm going to just, uh, that light lights up the steeple area. It's a spotlight that lights up the steeple and the bell tower. And basically, what I think may be happening is there's probably light reflecting off the bell and going over to the neighbor. That may be my guess. Um, but we've never gotten any form of complaints that I'm aware of at the time I've been over there. So that said, I understand the concern.
And, and to your, um, question, Linda, the, the, the light on the steeple already goes off at 11 o'clock.
It does.
And, and, and the request was to move that up to nine. And, and, and Mr. Schumacher, who here was on, on behalf of the church, agreed to, to that, so.
That's probably what's happening.
Yeah.
I feel like it's wrong to tell the church to shut off their steeple light, or stop ringing their bell, or, I mean, you know...
Well, you can vote against it, then. So, yeah, that's only, I mean, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but that's your option.
And I guess with, with all respect, too, we tell all sorts of businesses and, and institutions what they can and, what they can and can't do with their lighting, uh, based on, uh, you know, just general neighborly activity. Because it's a church, I don't know why we would treat them differently. Because they're a church, or, you know?
The Christian woman and I, it feels like it's wrong.
There is a separation of church and state, older person.
And again, it already is turning off. They were supposed to turn it off two hours earlier, so it's not like...
I will, you know, I, I just wanted to express that because when I heard...
Well, we'll know if you get struck down by lightning if you vote for it, right? Okay. Um, all those in, is there a motion? Okay, a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the listed conditions. Are you, who's that? You're abstaining? Is there a second? Okay, is there any further questions or discussion or meditation on this? All those in favor? All those opposed, and Larry's abstaining? Okay, got it. The motion carries.
He said aye.
Dave said aye.
Yes, he did say aye.
Number seven, discussion and possible action regarding the notice of public hearing on the 2018 budget.
Uh, so this is an item that we talked about real briefly at the public, at the budget study session. This is a requirement annually by the, uh, from the state that we, uh, notice, uh, the public hearing, for which we have set for November fourteenth, and publish the budget, the preliminary budget. Dan has prepared that information, uh, to be part of the, it's included in your packet. So again, this is preliminary budget. It will change, I promise you that 100%, uh, but that's a requirement of the state that we publish a budget.
The other question is, do you want to change the time from seven o'clock to some other time?
Yes.
Because this would probably be the only thing on the agenda, unless there's other, some other light material, because we're going to have a meeting six days prior.
Was that, was that a pun, light material?
A light agenda.
Yeah, so, his question is in regards specifically to that November fourteenth public hearing. Because it is the only item on the agenda, or likely will be the only item on the agenda that evening, does it make sense to move that up to six o'clock? Does that get better time for better? I agree with eight A.M. as well.
Some of us have to be at someplace else at eight A.M., but I'm not saying I have to be here either.
Earliest is five o'clock.
Do we want to do?
Okay, all right, let's be mindful that it's a public hearing. And we want to be mindful that we actually want the public to attend.
Those of you that have obligations, start to take a time. I'll do it anytime.
How about six?
Six is good.
Dave says aye.
No, okay, we want, okay, the, the reason I was thinking of six is because people want to, I mean, we want people to be able to eat.
Oh, right. I was eating. Before they eat, that they won't stay, because they'll be hungry.
Potluck public hearing.
I, I would love that.
All right, I'm, I'm on that. I'm all over it. Potluck public hearing.
Just curious, Mark, can we do that? Potluck public hearing?
Man, as long as we post it.
Sure we could. Do a potluck public hearing.
Someone will write a letter, and we'll get a response back here later.
All right, I'll make a motion that we have the meeting at six o'clock for the public hearing, with this the only item on the agenda.
Second. On the notice for the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, so, did we actually vote on number seven, then?
Not yet.
Okay.
There was a motion to set the public hearing on November fourteenth at 6:00 P.M.
Okay, and there's a second. All those...
I'm sorry, who was the second?
All those in favor? Opposed? So that covers number seven?
Yep.
Number eight, discussion and possible action on selection of a contractor for hazardous tree removal.
Okay, um, we sent out, well, as you saw in the memo, to, um, some various contractors for the tree removal. And Cobb's and Roberts was the low bid for those trees. At that time, there were like about 14 trees left, and there were a couple other properties that, um, that got hazardous tree removal notices sent. And it's just, uh, they have permission just to enter into, I guess, to have Cobb's and Roberts do the tree removal for the assessment process for tree removal.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or further discussion?
Can we also ask them if they can, um, assist our citizens with recommendations of where they can get replacement trees?
Is that...
Not, the tree removal people don't, they usually don't plant trees. Yeah, they, I mean, that's just, that's not really even part of our ordinance to, you know, if someone wants to plant a new tree, they just kind of do it on their own, so.
They can always call the UW extension.
I'm just curious, did you ask Cliffs why they didn't submit the, uh, quote for the other?
Um, we didn't, but even with their, um, bid for 10, they were, they were still...
Oh, I, I see their total.
Their, their total, even though they only, even though they forgot four trees, they were still, um, a higher bid than the other people, so, yeah.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Nine, discussion and possible action. Help me with the name. Larchelle? Okay. LLC's application for a Class B retail license, fermented malt beverage, and a Class B retail license intoxicating liquor.
So, um, I saw our clerk, uh, Liam Trader, sent out some correspondence to the council, which I thought was, was very well constructed and kind of gave the situation, uh, as far as from the city's perspective, you know, where we are with Class B licenses. And again, just as a quick reminder, Class B licenses is a bar, as opposed to Class A licenses, which is like a quick trip and you take the alcohol away. So we have a Class B license available. Uh, Mr. Kirchner has requested that license in order to open up and operate a restaurant, bar facility at the former Govers, former Famous Amos, former whatever Doug had a couple of years ago, I don't know. Uh, so, so that, that's, uh, that's the request that's before the council this evening is for the Mel's Class B licenses. Mr. Kirchner is here to provide any kind of feedback or answer any questions that council may have in regards to the operation of the business in terms of the liquor license.
I have a question, sir. Sure. Have you had any problems at all with, uh, just issues at your current location in Janesville?
Uh, no, none. We've, we've been there almost three years. And, uh, I have had, uh, I believe, three police calls, and they were all for, uh, personal. Didn't, I had one lady faint, uh, one person had a mild heart attack, nothing of any. Uh, I haven't had one fight. We're, uh, we're very family-oriented. My wife, it's actually our anniversary today. Thank you. We've, we've, uh, you know, we've been together for 29 years. We've got five grandchildren now, and two children of our own. Fast Eddies is a very family-oriented bar. Uh, just as a quick example, our Friday Night Fish Fry, I literally have families in there until eight, eight-thirty at night that come in because they're comfortable enough to bring their, their small children in. My grandkids are in there every day, you know, it's, it is very, very family-friendly. And, uh, my, the biggest thing for me coming to a, a town like Milton is I've, I've, I grew up in Janesville. And my daughter married, uh, a Milton resident. And I've gotten to know many, many people in Milton through, I, I play darts sort of for a living. I travel all over the world, and I've gotten to know many people up here, and I live on the north side. I'm, I'm literally half the distance here than I am from my other location. And, uh, really, the family structure of Milton has drawn me to it. And I've wanted to, since we opened Fast Eddies, I've been looking for a place up here. And, uh, the way that we go about it is food-oriented. I mean, if you look at me, you can tell. I like, I like our food. And, uh, I'm, I'm just super excited to bring that aspect to Milton.
How would you plan to ensure that, uh, the building is, uh, or the business is well-managed when you have two, uh, businesses or none?
Excuse me, um, part of the reason why I haven't, haven't moved here sooner, I looked at that, was being new to the business myself. My, my father owned a bar when I was a, when I was a young child. And so I, I grew up understanding the business. I worked at General Motors for 12 years when I left, when, uh, before I took the original buyout. And I, I travel all over the world playing darts. So when I, when I took, took on Fast Eddies, I want, I don't do anything quickly. So I wanted to make sure that I understood exactly what I was getting into, how I would go about the business of making sure that everything was taken care of. I'm a very hands-on owner. I brought my daughter and my son-in-law into Fast Eddies. They manage it now. They will be coming to Milton, as I said, Ryan is a, a lifelong Milton resident. They're, having as close a family as we have, I know that I can trust. I know that I, it's going to be done to our family standard. And I, I literally have no concerns with the management process whatsoever.
What kind of food are you going to serve?
Well, it's, I don't know if you're familiar with Fast Eddies at all, but, uh, it's, uh, I would call it our own take on, uh, bar food. We serve the, you know, the simple stuff, the burgers and fries and... But I would say three-quarters of our menu is homemade stuff, stuff we do ourself, signature items. We have signature burgers. We make a, a lot of our own sauces. We make a lot of our own mixtures. I mean, I mean, simple things like the au jus that we make for our prime rib is homemade. Our marinara that we serve with a lot of our dishes is all homemade. We've got a, we've got something called a deep-fried cheeseburger, which I, I came up with one late night when I couldn't sleep, that is just, we just started that, and it's incredible. I mean, but we're always looking for ways to take kind of food to the next level. That's kind of, you know, it's much more of a restaurant than it is a bar, I would say. I mean, when, in Janesville, it's, I, the bar that we took over was dart-oriented, which, you know, obviously, that's why I was going there. And I enjoy that part of it, but the food is really what I'm coming to Milton for. And, uh, I, I would encourage everyone to, even if you just take a look at, look at our menu online, I think you'll be very impressed with it. And, uh, we'll be doing that along with dinners and stuff of that sort.
Are you aware that we're having a potluck budget public hearing?
I would love the opportunity to help out with that.
The, the only comment I will make is, uh, is our clerk did contact the clerk in Janesville to, uh, uh, kind of review the status of, of the license in Janesville, and, and can confirm, uh, Mr. Kirchner said there, there were no blemishes, I guess, in a non-legal term, related to that, uh, license.
There was nothing on police reports either. I ran that check on my side.
Can I make a motion, then, to approve both Class B licenses? One for fermented malt beverages and the other one for intoxicating liquors?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. I know this was a long meeting. I'm sorry it was your anniversary.
Well, it's a very good anniversary present. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations and best of luck.
I can't wait to get to know all you guys. It's going to be, I'm, I'm so happy. Thank you.
Thanks. Happy anniversary. We're getting through it. Um, item number 10, discussion and possible action on ordinance number 434, amending section 78-1783 and creating section 78-1794, section 781933, parent B, parent 3D, and section 781933, parent B, parent 4E, and amending section 781934 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Milton regarding business signage, and that must all be included in your motion.
I'll make that motion to approve? As written.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, we would need to waive the second and third and adopt.
To make, to, I'll make the motion to waive the second reading and the third reading and adopt.
I'll resecond that.
All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number 11, discussion and possible action on use of park fund for pollinator promotion, street signs, and awards. Is the contest over?
The contest has been over, so we've been working with the, the artists on developing the, the signs. And Lamar Advertising Company is actually going to donate a billboard to us as well. So, um, we selected a student drawing for the billboard, and that's going to be, the design for that's going to be unveiled at the, um, seed collection on Saturday. And we also have the street signs, um, designed, and they're in the order process. Um, we did find another funding source for the actual signs, but the Parks Recreation Commission does want to do awards for both the student and, um, the, I guess, graphic designer that worked with us on the logo. And that's going to be at a cost of about $130. We're purchasing them from American Awards. And we're, the plan is to use park fund money for those. So just, uh, looking for a motion to approve spending up to $130 on the awards.
Yeah, so you'll see in the memo that it says, "Approve the use up to $1,130." But since the time that we wrote this memo and it was published, we've identified another funding source for those signs. So at this time, uh, they're only asking for 130. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Could you have, you guys, is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion. I've seen these pictures. There was... There was a very hard choice. There was a lot of very nice pictures. I'll make the motion that we approve the use of $130 for the park fund for six street signs and two awards for pollinator promotion initiative.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. I wonder if we could hang up those other pictures somewhere that weren't picked or do you have a plan for that?
There are a lot.
There's a lot.
But we have a library and we have all these walls at City Hall and Milton House and here. I mean, I say we hang them. I say we have enough city buildings. DPW, come on. Well, if we get them all hung up before our budget hearing, that would bring people to our budget hearing. Budget hearing and unveiling of all the runners-up. Okay, all right, so enough fun and games. Committee reports. And we will be swearing in the chief and new officers. Any other committee reports? Don't try to make stuff up.
Well, just for Historic Preservation Commission, just remember that we're starting the scavenger hunt on October 28th and that will run through November 5th. And November 5th is our 50 Years Together event and that's going to be at the Milton House at 2:00 PM. I don't anticipate it going more than two hours. We'll be showing a commemorative 50th anniversary video of the merger and we'll have a photo booth and some cakes. So it'll be a nice, fun event to celebrate the 50th anniversary.
Cool, and thank you so much for doing that.
I think all of you should participate in scavenger hunt.
We should assign teams.
We'll post it.
And I will say I have seen the scavenger hunt and
You can't be in it.
I won't be in it, but I will say some of them are challenging.
We could really do like a competition, like we could have a DPW team, a police department team, city staff team, library team. Okay, librarians, these are too smart, they can't be on a team.
And there are prizes for the scavenger hunt. We've had a lot of success getting some event tickets donated from area organizations and some other gifts as well. So it'll be exciting.
Anything other for, anything else for committee reports? Okay. Staff, chief.
We had day one of accreditation today, went pretty well. Day two and three are yet to come. We have a public listening session. I don't know what you want to call it, but the accreditation group or the assessors always give time for the public to provide input on our ability to meet with accreditation standards. So that's going to be in this room tomorrow night at 5 o'clock. And they'll work part of a day Thursday and then we'll see what they come up with. So hopefully before the end of the year, we'll know whether or not we passed. And the Wiley Egg Board will offer their opinion on how we did. Second thing is on Monday, October 30th, we will be, it will be the first day of our new police officer, Jared Fish, is joining our department. He's a local kid. You might recognize the name. He's Guy's son, if I understand correctly, and so he's coming back home. So we're really looking forward to having him part of the department and we're going to do a ceremonial swearing in with you all, I think, on the 8th. That's Wednesday, right? Wednesday, the 8th. So that's all I got.
Lisa?
Our current library catalog, Rock Cat, is being replaced by a faster, larger and easier to use catalog called Share in January. It will include 28 libraries instead of seven as far as Kenosha. So it's a great new collaboration with two systems now. We'll still have our own Rock County system, but we have this great shared catalog. So now we have 750,000 items in our catalog. We're going to go up to 2.5 million items, so. They're called Lake Shores, Lake Shores system, yeah. We have a tool drive going on for our Maker Space, so gently used tools. The full list is on our website, but it's, you know, screwdrivers and drill bits and all sorts of things that we can use to create things in the spark. And we have a used book sale coming up the whole month of November. It will be open during library hours.
Thank you.
Chungkin, which is the catapult trebuchet making competition is, has been rescheduled because of the weather to this Saturday. We know we have at least five that are going to be in competition, so it's going to be a lot of fun. And that runs from 12 to 2 on Saturday.
Inga?
Once again, the seed collection is this Saturday. So 10:00 AM, come on down and we're going to be presenting the awards at that event.
And it sounds like it's going to be good weather.
I hope so.
Oh, where is everybody meeting? Inga, where is everybody going to be meeting?
By the prairie, in the park? What I might do is just do some directional signage to get people from Parkview Drive up to that Brown Drive entrance area because that's closer to the prairie.
Al?
Tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, Linda, Ryan and I will be at the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Conference. Also, looking ahead to our November calendar, we are hoping to have, or planning to have, a personnel and finance meeting, a very brief one on November 8th, because we have an item to discuss with the committee for that. And we'll also have a public work, or a public safety committee meeting that day as well. Scott and I have talked about, we have data back in regards to stop sign gate along Roger Street and wanted to show that to the committee to see what their thoughts were and frankly, if they wanted us to continue to spend time on it, because the data was very compelling. So I just wanted to kind of give people a heads up on that. Obviously it'll be out on the calendar and we'll send agendas out and keep you apprised of that.
Dan?
I don't have anything.
How would he tell you?
The three streets are paved, Bowers Lake, Columbus and part of Arthur Drive.
They're paved already?
Yeah.
That is so amazing. Is that on our website and our Twitter account?
Probably not. And then they might pour the curb out at the New Putman this week yet too.
That's it? No leaves, nothing, no brush, no pickup?
Well, it's just regular collection, so.
Volky trash tomorrow?
Yeah, there was a lot. There's a lot.
I'm looking for a small desk. I'm going to have to drive around.
There's a lot of stuff.
Okay, okay, so our team building exercise is so easy tonight. So easy.
I know, I know. We should have done it first, but it's so cool.
So.
Are we watching the Cubs together?
Just for you. So this is about being aware of our own cultural implicit bias. And it's also, you know, looking at, you know, what kind of community do we want Milton to be? Which kind of goes along with what I wrote for the Courier coming out tomorrow. So remember when we did the training on respectful communications? So this is just taking it one step further. And I have previewed these videos already and I think you're going to like them. Talk is first.
I haven't checked out my computer yet.
I didn't know Flanagan was there.
Or we just talk those scenes right next to the TV and put that on there.
All right.
We had no audience down there.
There you go.
He's got the video made email to us.
I'm sorry.
One time you're different because you're a part of a different. Different because you're a part of a, a different disability. Other time you're different because you like a different color. You know, you could be different. You can jump both on the playground and someone can't jump. It can be something very simple or it can be something that's, that's very.
You know, I was just going to say, I think that I liked both of those.
You know, I was just going to say, I think that I liked both of those. And I also like that you have brought this as part of our team building, because I think it just, I think it's human nature that we just have to always be reminded that we are not all alike, that everybody is special in their own way. And not even just as elected officials, but even just being a resident or a citizen in the city of Milton. I mean, everybody talks about this city and the wonderful people that are here. And these types of things and what the schools teach the kids for, you know, people being different. You know, I run into this every day and with my job, I have people that call me from all kinds of different places. And I think that one of the, what I, what I always try to do is just not judge, period. Because if that person has a pair of green glasses on and, and my glasses are brown, that, that's their preference and that's good for them. And it's their individuality that makes them special and it's everybody's individuality that makes all of us a group.
Is there any other comments or anything else? The other thing I wanted to let you know, if you have any ideas for team building, just let me know. It doesn't always have to be me. I'm not very open. But I appreciate, I really do appreciate, you know, you taking more time out of your night. I know it was a little bit longer, but I really liked those videos. I don't know if we can share them on our website or Twitter account or anything. Maybe the last one's kind of cool.
Ted?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, thank you for doing that. Yeah, yeah. He has one out, that was a, one that was done a while ago. He has another one out besides that one too. So, our next meeting is?
October 24th at 5:00 PM.
And that is for?
Referendum discussion.
Referendum endorsing possible?
Possible endorsement of referendum.
Discussion and possible action on endorsing this school referendum.
And so.
In the meantime, if any of our citizens have any comments that they would like to share, I'm sure that all of us would take them.
Right. And we can, they could come and make comments at that meeting too. We'll have public comments.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I think we should. I think we should hear from the public if.
Well, wouldn't we have public hearing?
No, but.
But a public comment section.
Yeah.
I'm concerned that it's not going to be done in that.
Well, here's, I guess the reason I'm thinking about that is I think, I don't know that anybody will come.
We're going to be discussing whether we want to endorse the referendum or not.
Right, right. And this is something new.
I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, we're elected to represent them and they might have an opinion on whether their elected officials should be endorsing. And I'm not for or against it, I, but I want to be transparent and I want to be inclusive and it's.
It would be an open public meeting.
Right.
We could not have it in closed session.
Right, right.
So, yeah, no, I know you're not.
Right. So, I mean, I guess we could have a 10-minute public comment, a limit to that. So, okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?